Passaic County, it's a regular meeting, uh, February eighth, two thousand twenty-two. And I have a roll call, please, Lou.
County Commissioners Bartlett. Best. Duffy. Gallo.
Here.
Lapore.
Here.
Deputy Director Lazaro. Director James.
Here.
Here.
Who's that, Sandy?
I'm here.
Oh, good, okay. Uh, so note that, please, Lou, and can I have an announcement of the open public meetings law, please?
Ladies and gentlemen, the notice requirements of the open public meetings law has been satisfied with respect to this meeting specifying the time, date, location, including the annual notice, adopted the reorganization meeting, filed with the county clerk, and posted in the administration building and mailed to two newspapers in accordance with the law provisions of the law. And also, please note that original public, uh, annual notice called for this to be a live meeting, and I advertised in the Herald News on Feb- on Friday and the Record on Saturday, calling for this meeting to be held virtually.
Thank you. Uh, so I'm gonna ask you to rise for the invocation. I'm gonna ask, uh, Commissioner Ga- Gallo to, uh, do the pledge of allegiance. And at the end of that, just stay standing for a moment of silence to remember all the men and women who have died while serving in the United States Armed Forces and all who have died from COVID nineteen, especially the over two thousand forty-four residents of Passaic County.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. From which I stand.
One nation, under God.
For liberty, just for all.
Invocation, Lou, please.
Oh, God, who provides for thy people by thy power and rules over them in love. Be gracious enough to bless thy servants, our county commissioners in this county of Passaic, that thy people may dwell in peace and safety through our Lord. Amen.
Director.
Thank you all.
Director.
Yes, sir.
I can, we'd like to add Sergeant Stephen Miller from the Clifton PD, who passed away this week.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Can I have a motion to approve the minutes of January twenty-fifth?
Motion Duffy. Lapore seconds.
Thank you. Uh, roll call.
Uh, County Commissioners Bartlett.
Yes.
Best.
Yeah.
Duffy.
Yes.
Gallo.
Yes.
Lapore.
Yes.
Deputy Director Lazaro.
Yes.
Director James.
Yes. Uh, I don't believe we have any proclamations. I don't see any. Is that correct, Lou?
Correct.
All right, so, uh, I'd like to turn it over to our administrator, Anthony De Nova. Uh, Tony, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Director. Uh, I'll just turn it over to, uh, Dr. Gungil to give us our, uh, brief update on our COVID response. So, Dr. Gungil, good to see you.
You too, Mr. De Nova. Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
Good evening.
As is the usual custom, I will provide you an update of Passaic County's response to COVID nineteen. Next slide, please. Tomorrow will make seven hundred days since we've been dealing with this in Passaic County. Um, I think one of the most interesting thing in a negative way is that two weeks ago, we had our meeting, and since then to now, an additional two thousand seven hundred and forty-three people were infected with COVID nineteen. But to me, that's a very startling, um, statistic, and, uh, most of those cases were Omicron cases. Next slide, please. Um, the Commissioner Director just mentioned, as of last Friday, there were two thousand and forty-four Passaic County residents who died of COVID nineteen. As of this morning, ten more people had passed the COVID nineteen. Again, a statistic that we were hoping we wouldn't be seeing right now, uh, but, you know, it's, it's very sad. Um, next slide, please. Uh, this slide is the Epi slide you've seen, um, forever. Um, and the one to the right is just the last from December eighth to now, so the last two months. So you can see the increase of cases over the holidays. Um, I'll, I mentioned earlier about, uh, deaths, and, uh, next slide, please. Next slide, please. Can you hear me?
There you go.
Okay, good, thanks. Um, okay. So our response in Passaic County has been, um, to test, to vaccinate, et cetera. And this slide shows the vaccination progress that is done by, by your staff in the Health Department. So we've administered over sixty-six thousand vaccines. Um, and that's just a percentage of all the vaccines that have been administered in, uh, Passaic County. Uh, the, the, on your left is the breakdown. Um, I think we were hoping that the mega site, which is this one right here, I guess, I don't know if you could see my arrow, but, um, the second, yes, that, the mega site to the right, five oh nine. So the mega site, which was opened on, uh, they had a soft open opening two weeks ago. We're not seeing a lot of traffic there, but we're just happy that we are getting some people vaccinated and boosted there. Most of the people who are coming there are coming for their boosters. So, um, it's gonna continue to remain open, um, and we're gonna just try to, to improve that number. Uh, next slide, please. All right, um, so I mentioned boosters, and, um, one of the reasons that it's an important piece of our response is that we have learned that after, uh, several months that the vaccines, uh, efficacy wanes, and so the boosters become important to maintain our level of immunity. And this slide shows where we are in, uh, in coverage for the boosters. As you can see by the arrow, Passaic County and the far right shows you that we are at forty-one percent of those who had received both vaccines have now received the booster vaccine. Um, it's an issue because if people are not boosted, they do not have the immunity to COVID nineteen. So we really need to get the word out there that people need to be boosted, um, because that's what's gonna make the difference. Also, I think I mentioned to you that I don't, we don't like to be last in anything, and right now we are. Um, the state's data is, is higher than ours. In total, it's about fifty-one percent of, uh, persons who received the first vaccine, uh, and second have received the booster. We are at forty-one percent. So we in Passaic County have a lot of work to do. And, uh, you know, I also want to state that we did such a good job with the first part of this that it's a hard, you know, to catch up to where we were, but we will. And I'll tell you more about what we're doing to make that happen. Excuse me, next slide, please. All right, so this is a busy slide, but just to, to, to summarize it, there's a lot of things going on, and I'm sure you've heard about a lot of them. Yesterday, the governor announced that a month from yesterday, March seventh, that, uh, masks and facial coverings will no longer be required in, uh, in schools and, and daycare centers. So that's something we're looking forward to, but a lot could happen between now and then. Um, you also have learned that COVID tests are available to every household in the United States. So that's, that's a good thing. But here is the issue that we have with, with some of the changes. And I'm specifically gonna speak about the, um, at-home testing. If people are tested at home, we do not have the data, so we don't know if people are testing positive. Um, so it's a concern that we have, but in the meantime, we are offering the vaccines to help people to be able to fight this, um, this plague. Next slide, please. All right, this slide speaks about how we're doing with our vaccination, um, uh, process in Passaic County. So starting on the left, uh, the five to eleven-year-old group, as you know, it's only a short period of time since they were eligible for the vaccine. And so within that group, we have vaccinated, um, oh, they have re- over twenty-four percent of the five to eleven-year-old group have received at least one dose. Um, for the twelve to seventeen, over seventy-two percent have received at least one dose. And for the adults eighteen and, and over, it's about ninety-seven percent of that population has received one dose of the vaccine. So there's a lot of work happening, but a lot more needs to be done to protect our, our, our residents. Next slide, please. All right, so I told you that we're, we're doing some stuff. So, uh, my team and I have come up with a Boost Passaic County Week, and that's gonna start on Monday, on Valentine's Day, because we figure Valentine's Day, people are thinking about love and happiness. And so, you know, love yourself, love your family, get boosted, get, get boosted, get a kiss. So we're gonna have Hershey's Kisses, we're gonna, we're doing a lot of, we're doing a lot of, um, uh, outreach. Uh, we are actually.
What a great idea, get a booster, get a kiss. I love it.
Many partners to, to, uh, extend their hours of availability. We're working on, um, on a, a TV campaign. We're working on, uh, app, an app campaign that, you know, comes on your phone, and hopefully we'll get all of that done by tomorrow so that people will know that it's coming. But as you can see, we have many partners. Uh, we're having, uh, clinics at William Patterson. Somebody's working with, uh, Montclair, somebody's talking to Berkeley. Uh, I've, I've, uh, spoken with, um, Dr. Rose of PCC. And so we're really trying to, to get as many people on board so that we could try to vaccinate more people and move our data up so that we're not at the bottom of the pile. There's a, a long way to go, but we're willing to push and make it happen. And for people who are listening who have not received their boosters, please get your booster. You, you are not as protected without your booster, so please get your booster. Next slide, please. All right, and this is, again, another busy slide, but just to give you an idea of all the different places that we have, um, where we are doing vaccinations to get people, uh, out there. Um, and in each of the towns that we cover, we've got, uh, doing a, a webcam pain in those municipalities, and we're doing additional, uh, vaccinations and testing in those municipalities, as well as in other municipalities throughout Passaic County. In our weekly meeting with the, all the health officers in Passaic County and the hospitals, um, we floated the idea last Friday. Everyone said they'd be on board, and I know that, uh, they are also, uh, planning more vaccination clinics and planning to get the word out. So, uh, I'm hoping and praying that once Monday comes and the, the whole week comes, that we're gonna see a lot of people getting out there, getting their shots, and, and, uh, moving on with this COVID nineteen. Next slide, please. And this is just a reminder to keep your distance, get vaccinated, et cetera. Thank you. That's my report for this week.
Thank you. Uh, does anybody have any questions for our doctor? Anybody?
Through you, Director, uh, Dr. Gungil, is there any plans or schedule for a fourth booster?
For a fourth, so we've been hearing that there might be, but, uh, we don't have definitive information. The information we're getting right now that they're asking us to prepare for is for the little ones from six months to five years old. They're asking us to get all of our ducks in a row so that when the approval takes place, we'll be ready to run with it. That's what they've been concentrating with us on.
Right. Now, I wanna correct my question. I said fourth booster. It's actually the second booster.
Yeah.
But you knew what I was saying.
I did.
All right, thank you.
You're welcome.
Through you, uh, Director, uh, and I'm sure there will be a fourth booster at some point. Um, Dr. Gungil, I, I'm struck that we're last in the state, uh, in our, uh, booster rates. And I was wondering if you have any sense of why that is, and specifically if it's something like, uh, you know, language barrier with our large immigrant populations, what we're doing to try and improve that?
So, so I think it's, there are many reasons why. I think our initial response was, you know, really out of the park, right? So we, we really did a, a, a very big job. We got many people vaccinated very quickly, actually. But I think there is, there is COVID fatigue. There is a vaccination fatigue. I think people are like, another one, like, I've had it, you know, it's, it's. And so I think that there's a piece of that. I'm sure that there, that another barrier could be a language barrier. But there are other, uh, counties that have language barriers, right? We have Hudson County, we have Middlesex County. We have other counties that have a similar demographic as we do, and they're a little bit, you know, they have a higher percentage of people receiving that booster slash third dose. I think part of the reason is that we really hit it out of the ballpark so far out that for us to get up to where we were, it's a little bit harder because these are the people who were vaccinated. So I think all of those things are, you know, different variables that are influencing where we are. But I'm not, that doesn't change anything for me. What I believe is that we can do it, we just have to do it. So that's what we're working on. We're gonna make it happen, and we're gonna move the needle. If you look back at that slide, we act, we have actually vaccinated over a hundred and twenty thousand people have received that, that booster, right? But because we had so many who received that first and second dose, it's a, it's a hill to climb.
I'm good. Anybody else have a question? I, I thank you, Doc. Uh, you know, our conversation this morning answered all my questions, so I don't have to ask anything. But, uh, thank you for the work you're doing. I keep saying it. Your department saves lives, and, uh, the response has been second to none. So thank you for what you do. Anybody else, or I'm gonna let Doc go do more of what she does. Thank you for showing up, Shirley.
Director, that's all that I have on my administrative report.
Okay, uh, let me have a motion to suspend the regular order of business, please.
Motion Duffy.
Really, I mean, Commissioner Duffy, is there a second?
Second, Bartlett.
Okay. Come on and roll, please.
County Commissioners Bartlett.
Yes.
Best.
Yes.
Duffy.
Yes.
Gallo.
Yes.
Lapore.
Yes.
Deputy Director Lazaro.
Yes.
Director James.
Yes. Uh, can I have a motion? Oh, I'm sorry, Lou, you wanna read the bond ordinance, please?
Sure. Uh, bond ordinance, uh, twenty twenty-two dash oh one, bond ordinance to authorize the making of various public improvements and the acquisition of new additional or replacement equipment and machinery, new additional furnishings, and new automotive vehicles, including original apparatus and equipment in, by, and for the county of Passaic, state of New Jersey, to appropriate the sum of fourteen million five hundred and fifty thousand to pay the cost thereof, to make a down payment or fully fund appropriations from the Capital Improvement Fund, to authorize the issuance of bonds to finance such appropriations, and to provide for the issuance of bonds anticipation notes in anticipation of the issuance of such bonds.
Can I have a motion to open the public hearing on bond ordinances?
Four moves it.
Second Duffy.
Uh, roll call, please.
County Commissioners Bartlett.
Yes.
Best.
Yes.
Duffy.
Yes.
Gallo.
Yes.
Lapore.
Yes.
Deputy Director Lazaro.
Yes.
Director James.
Yes. Does anyone present desire to be heard on this bond ordinance?
Okay, Director, um, Micah is monitoring to see if anyone has their hands up. Micah, do, does anyone have their hands up?
I have no hands up and no comments in the Q and A or chat.
And I'll make a motion to close the public portion. Duffy.
Lapore seconds.
Roll.
County Commissioners Bartlett.
Yes.
Best.
Yes.
Duffy.
Yes.
Gallo.
Yes.
Lapore.
Yes.
Deputy Director Lazaro.
Yes.
Director James.
Yes. Can I have a motion to adopt, uh, the bond ordinance?
Report moves it. Duffy, second.
Roll, please.
County Commissioners Bartlett.
Yes.
Best.
Yes.
Duffy.
Yes.
Gallo.
Yes.
Lapore.
Yes.
Deputy Director Lazaro.
Yes.
Director James.
Yes. All right, uh, bond ordinance twenty-two, twenty twenty-two oh two. Lou, you wanna read the bond ordinance?
Bond ordinance to authorize the undertaking of various public improvements for the county, this Passaic County, uh, Community College in, by, and for the county of Passaic, state of New Jersey, to appropriate the sum of four million nine hundred and seventy-one thousand to pay the cost thereof, to authorize the issuance of bonds for, to finance such appropriations, to provide for the issuance of bond anticipation notes in anticipation of the issuance of such bonds.
All right, let me have a motion to open the public hearing on bond ordinance.
Four moves it.
Second Duffy.
Okay, second was Duffy. Uh, roll call, please, Lou.
County Commissioners Bartlett.
Yes.
Best.
Yes.
Duffy.
Yes.
Gallo.
Yes.
Lapore.
Yes.
Deputy Director Lazaro.
Yes.
Director James.
Yes. Does anyone present desire to be heard on the bond ordinance? And Micah also, are there any hands raised?
At present time, there are no hands raised, and there are no comments in the chat or the Q and A.
Then I'll make a motion to close the public portion. Duffy.
Four seconds.
Roll, please.
County Commissioners Bartlett.
Yes.
Best.
Yes.
Duffy.
Yes.
Gallo.
No.
Lapore.
Yes.
Deputy Director Lazaro.
Yes.
Director James.
Yes. Motion to adopt bond ordinance, please.
For the record, just so that, cause Commissioner Gallo made it, Commissioner Gallo, that was just to close the public portion?
Well, I'm sorry, I apologize.
That, that's okay. It gets confusing, I get it.
Uh, would you like, would you like that, change that to a yes for the close?
Yes, please.
Okay.
So please, Lou, reflect that he voted yes on the closure, uh, now. Motion to adopt the bond ordinance. Do we have a motion in a second?
Motion made by Lapore.
And second by Duffy.
Roll.
County Commissioners Bartlett.
Yes.
Best.
Yes.
Duffy.
Yes.
Gallo.
No.
Lapore.
Yes.
Deputy Director Lazaro.
Yes.
Director James.
Yes. All right, bond ordinance twenty twenty-two oh three, Lou.
Bond ordinance to authorize the making of various public improvements and the acquisition of new addition, additional or replacement equipment and machinery and new information technology and telecommunications commit, equipment for the Passaic, for Passaic County Community College in, by, and for the county of Passaic, state of New Jersey, to appropriate the sum of seven hundred and ninety-one thousand three hundred and thirty-two dollars to pay the cost thereof, to authorize the issuance of bonds to, uh, finance such appropriations, and to provide for the issuance of bond anticipation notes in anticipation of the issuance of such bonds.
Thank you. Motion to open the public hearing on this bond ordinance.
Four moves it.
There a second?
Second, Bartlett.
Lou.
Okay. Uh, County Commissioners Bartlett.
Yes.
Uh, Best.
Yes.
Duffy.
Yes.
Gallo.
Yes.
Lapore.
Yes.
Deputy Director Lazaro.
Yes.
Director James.
Yes. Does anyone present desire to be heard on this bond ordinances? And Micah, do we have anybody with a hand raised?
Presently, there are no hands raised, no comments in the chat or the Q and A.
Also, also, Director, uh, the public notice called for all three bond ordinances. If people could, uh, send in through public at PassaicCountyNJ, uh, dot org, and there was no public comments for any of the three bond ordinances.
Thank you. Can I have a motion to close then?
I'll make a motion Duffy.
Four seconds.
Roll, please.
County Commissioners Bartlett.
Yes.
Best.
Yes.
Duffy.
Yes.
Gallo.
Yes.
Lapore.
Yes.
Deputy Director Lazaro.
Yes.
Director James.
Yes. Kind of a motion to adopt the bond ordinance.
Four moves it.
Second Duffy.
Lapore and Duffy. Roll caller.
County Commissioners Bartlett.
Yes.
Best.
Yes.
Duffy.
Yes.
Gallo.
Yes.
Lapore.
Yes.
Deputy Director Lazaro.
Yes.
Director James.
Yes. And can I have a motion to, uh, resume the regular order of business?
Report moves it.
Second.
Roll call, please.
County Commissioners Bartlett.
Yes.
Best.
Yes.
Duffy.
Yes.
Gallo.
Yes.
Lapore.
Yes.
Deputy Director Lazaro.
Yes.
Director James.
Yes. Uh, so this will be the county commissioner report. Uh, I'm gonna defer, I will say this. I met with, uh, Dr. Gungil this morning. Uh, our message to our residents who got two shots, uh, and who now have not yet gotten a booster shot, um, we are concerned about it, so we're gonna put a big effort into trying to, uh, contact people and educate people about the risks that they have of not getting the booster shot. And we will do that with her, uh, for, uh, Valentine's Day and the week thereof. So, um, there's a lot gonna be happening with our Health Department, and this is just the first, uh, of many things that are gonna be taking place there. So, uh, let's all try to tell people and help, and the message out to people that we do have booster shots available. There's walk-ins, uh, you don't have to make an appointment, it's not difficult to get the shots. So anybody who, uh, is heeding this and hearing this message, when you want a shot, they're available. And on our website, there's the several places that you can go and literally walk in and get a, and get a booster shot. Feel free to access our webpage, uh, and look for that information, and then go get yourself, uh, protected. Uh, Deputy Director Lazaro, you're up?
I don't have anything.
Okay, uh, Commissioner Bartlett.
Uh, thank you, Director. Yeah, I don't often prepare remarks for this part of our meeting, but I hope you'll indulge me for just a couple of minutes. Passaic County turned a hundred and eighty-five years old yesterday, and President's Day is coming up next weekend. And the U.S. has even already started begun preparations for a na- for a nation's semi-quintcentennial, uh, in twenty twenty-six. And I practiced saying that, uh, that's our two-hundred-fiftieth anniversary as a nation. Uh, and all that has been thinking a lot about history and about our particular moment in it. Uh, since its twenty twenty showed us to be a more diverse nation than ever, and at the same time, white nationalism is on the rise, and with it, an anti-democratic movement the likes of which the U.S. has never seen before, increasingly vocal and visible antisemitism, Islamophobia, and violence against religious and racial minorities. In just the month since this B- Board reorganized, the United States has seen a gunman attack a synagogue in Texas, bomb threats directed at historically black colleges and universities, and news that Passaic County's own Imam Mohammed Katnani and the ICPC in Patterson, where he preaches, were among the targets of a private anti-Muslim group that has surveilled prominent Muslim Americans nationwide. The leaders of synagogues, mosques, budwaras, temples, schools, and other potential targets are now speaking of a Second Amendment tax, the extra money they have to spend on safety and security from gun violence, which takes away dollar-for-dollar money they would otherwise be spending on their spiritual and educational missions. At a time when the United States most needs to come together, it feels like instead we're coming apart. Now, this is not a new idea. Benjamin Franklin commented at the time of the signing of the Declaration of Independence, "We must all hang together, or most assuredly, we all shall hang separately." And fourscore and seven years later, at Gettysburg, President Lincoln wondered aloud whether a nation conceived in liberty and dedicated to the proposition that all men and women are created equal can long endure. But, but Lincoln saw to it that the nation did endure, and, and so must we. We'll remember Lincoln and his predecessor, George Washington, on President's Day later this month. Let's make that a moment, and this month a moment, when we here in twenty twenty-two redouble our efforts to hang together and to protect, if not perfect, the union that they created and defended. So happy President's Day and happy birthday, Passaic County.
Thank you, Commissioner. Uh, Commissioner Best.
Hello, everyone, and, uh, thank you, Commissioner Director. Uh, really quick, just wanted to remind everyone that February is Black History Month, um, and we will be celebrating that at our next Freeholder Meeting, excuse me, County Commissioner Meeting. Uh, this is one of the reasons why we take. This is one of the reasons why we changed the name anyway, so we'll be celebrating that at our next county commissioner meeting later this month. We are honored and privileged to celebrate the accomplishments of some of our colleagues on the municipal level. We'll be celebrating the accomplishments of several of the African-American citywide elected officials throughout the county of Passaic, so we're real excited about that. Thank you, that's.
Thanks. Thank, thank you, Theodore. Commissioner Duffy.
Uh, good evening, everyone. I wanted, as first remark to TJ, happy Black History Month. Look forward to seeing what's gonna happen, what you have programmed for. Also, Commissioner Bartlett, well said, great words, really very thoughtful. And I, I know the, the whole commissioners feel the same way. I just, real quick, I had experience, as most people know, I live in West Milford, and we've had two snowfalls that I've experienced going up the mountain from Bergen County into Passaic County, and I, I was barricaded the second time, the first time it wasn't barricaded. Going up in Bergen County's area, up the mountain, was horrendous, was awful. I didn't know how I was gonna get back down into Ringwood. And when I got to the top of the mountain, it was like the Wizard of Oz. All of a sudden, there's no snow on the ground. These guys, guys did a phenomenal job on both snowfalls. As a result of that experience, I reached out to Ken Simpson, who runs DBW, and we had a conversation, and we also had a conversation with, with our administrator, Anthony De Nova, and we're reaching out to Bergen County to help them out. I can, I can appreciate that. There's very few people that, from Bergen County up that mountain. They just live on the mountain. Once you go over the mountain, it's Passaic County. So what's the urgency? Well, the urgency is, we all live up there, and we gotta get over, up the mountain and down the mountain. And if we can help Bergen County to facilitate safety for our residents in Passaic County, I'm all for it, and I'm working towards that goal. Other than that, I wish everyone to be safe, and thank you, Director.
Thank you, Terry. Commissioner Lepore.
Okay. My committee administration and finance has sixteen resolutions for review by my colleagues. I'd like to highlight five of them, and you'll see a recurring theme in each one. Resolution two is a resolution exercising a five-year option extending the shared service agreement between the county of Passaic and the Wantacoo Board of Education. Resolution three is authorizing a shared service agreement between the Passaic County Clerk and the Monmouth County Clerk. Resolution seven is authorizing a shared service agreement between Passaic County Department of Human Services and the Superior Court of New Jersey, Passaic County Vicinage. Resolution eight is authorizing a shared service agreement between Passaic County and Department of Human Services, the Passaic County Technical Institute for Youth Enrichment Program. And number nine is resolution authorizing an increase in appropriations under a shared service agreement between the county of Passaic and the county of Bergen. Uh, so you could see by these five resolutions that we work hard in trying to save the taxpayers of Passaic County money by engaging in the shared service agreement, which also helps the folks that we engage the agreement with. So we'll look forward to continuing the rest of the year to see if we can find more areas we can optimize the cost of these services. And thank you very much, Director. That's all I have.
Thank you there. So I'm assuming we don't have any communications. Can I have a motion to open the public portion of the meeting, please?
Lepore opens.
Duffy, second.
Roll.
County Commissioners Bartlett.
Yes.
Best.
Yes.
Duffy.
Yes.
Gallo.
Yes.
Lepore.
Yes.
Deputy Director Lozare.
Yes.
Director James.
Yes. So is there any member of the public wishing to comment? You will have three minutes. Remember, everything you say will be part of the public record. And so Lou, first with you, do we have anybody who's responded by email?
Yes. We have one from Michael Portenese, president of Gator Recycling. Good afternoon. My name is Michael Portenese. Uh, I would like to, I would like the time to discuss the wrongful addition of a crosswalk near St. Joseph's Hospital on property not owned by the county of Passaic. A crosswalk was installed over pre-existing Norfolk Southern driveway. No permission from Norfolk Southern was given to the county of Passaic. This is now holding back a bigger project.
Any else?
No.
All right, well, we'll have that looked into and by the appropriate people. Anybody else wanting to comment from the public?
Micah, is there anything?
At the present time, I have no hands raised, and there's no comments in the Q and A or the chat.
Seeing no one at the, uh, reaching out, let's, uh, I move to close the public portion.
Second. There a second to that?
Four seconds.
Roll call, please.
County Commissioner Bartlett.
Yes.
Best.
Yes.
Duffy.
Yes.
Gallo.
Yes.
Lepore.
Yes.
Director, Deputy Director Lozare.
Yes.
Director James.
Yes. So I'll need a two-thirds vote on, uh, Q, which is a resolution authorizing appropriations between the period of January one, twenty twenty-two, and the adoption of the county of Passaic budget for an emergency temporary current budget pursuant to NJSA forty A colon four dash twenty. Uh, can I have a motion on that resolution, please?
Report moves it.
Duffy, second.
A discussion? Thank you. Roll call, please.
County Commissioners Bartlett. Best.
Yes.
Duffy.
Yes.
Gallo.
Yes.
Lepore.
Yes.
Deputy Director Lozare.
Yes.
Director James.
Uh, yes. Uh, I just got handed a note, and I apologize, it passed. I apologize to Commissioner Gallo. Apparently, I missed you when it was for commissioner reports. So please, if you have one to make, I'm sorry, you certainly should make it now.
I'm trying, I can't, there we go.
There you go. Yeah, I can't see, I can see your name. There you are. I'm sorry, I apologize to you.
No, that's quite all right. Just don't let it happen again, but it's okay. I just wanna say hello to everyone, and I have nothing to report. Thank you.
All right. I, I apologize again. There you go. So administration and finance, I'm sorry for the consent agenda. Matt, do we have any late starters?
Yes, Director, through you, I have one late starter, R thirty-nine, resolution authorizing payment to A4 Media LLC for the purchase of cable television advertisements to bring awareness to internet crime pursuant to NJSA forty A colon eleven dash three at SEC. Um, there is no need for executive session. Um, again, my general reminder, if any commissioners have any resolutions, they will not remove from the consent agenda to be voted on separately. Please make that motion through the director. And Director, if I may, the commissioner should notice that we have a new meeting manager system. I just wanna recognize our clerk, Mr. Imhoff, and the deputy administrator, and Micah Hassenger, our IT director, who led the charge on that effort. It's a, it's a great software, it's working out great, so nice work by them on that.
It is. Matt, just out of curiosity, I will take a motion to add R thirty-nine, and I'll deal with the, uh, the one that should be removed after that. So can I have a motion to add R thirty-nine to the consent agenda?
I'll make that motion Duffy.
Four seconds.
Okay, roll on that, just that adding R thirty-nine.
County Commissioners Bartlett.
Yes.
Best. Duffy.
Yes.
Gallo.
Yes.
Lepore.
Yes.
Deputy Director Lozare.
Yes.
Director James.
Yes. So, uh, Matt, I'm gonna remove R fourteen for a later vote from the consent agenda to accommodate one of our commissioners. So I will take a motion right now to pass the consent agenda, R one through R thirteen. And, and I'll wait for the second one, but, and, and right now, it's R one through R thirteen. Can I have a motion for that?
And R fifteen through R thirty-nine?
Well, yes, it will be.
Report moves it.
You second it all. You could do it all together if you want.
All right, then we'll do it all. Thank you, John. We'll do it all together. So it's, it's R one through R thirteen, then R fifteen through R thirty-nine. And yes, John, I was aware of it.
Okay, Duffy, make that motion.
Okay, is there a second?
I'll second, report.
Roll, please.
County Commissioners Bartlett.
Yes.
Best.
Yes.
Duffy.
Yes.
Gallo.
Yes.
Lepore.
Yes.
Deputy Director Lozare.
Yes.
Director James.
Yes. Uh, could, we're gonna have a separate vote now on R fourteen. Can I have a motion in a second, please?
Motion Duffy.
Report seconds it.
Okay, roll. This is just on R fourteen.
County Commissioners Bartlett.
Yes.
Best.
Yes.
Duffy.
Yes.
Gallo.
No.
Lepore.
Yes.
Deputy Director Lozare.
Yes.
Director James.
Yes. Thank you. Love me, uh, motion for the personnel agenda, please.
Move the personnel.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Uh, roll.
County Commissioners Bartlett.
Yes.
Best.
Yes.
Duffy.
Yes.
Gallo.
Yes.
Lepore.
Yes.
Deputy Director Lozare.
Yes.
Director James.
Yes. Could I have a motion on the bills list, please?
Second.
Roll, please.
County Commissioners Bartlett.
Yes.
Best.
Yes.
Duffy.
Yes.
Gallo.
Yes.
Lepore.
Yes.
Uh, Deputy Director Lozare.
Yes.
Director James.
Yes. And just for your information, our next meeting, probably is going to be an in-person meeting. We're not gonna be doing our next meeting remotely, so it will be held uh, in our conference room, our meeting room, and it will be an in-person meeting. Uh, we will be limiting the number of people that are admitted, uh, and people will have to be wearing masks during the, the meeting, but we will do it in person. Does anybody object to that? Okay, so that's, that's what we plan on doing on our very next meeting. And it's my understanding that our next meeting will be a review of our budget uh, for the coming year. Is that correct, Mr. De Nova?
That is correct, Director.
All right, so there we are. That's that agenda for the next meeting. Uh, everybody, stay safe.
Director, if I, if I can through you, I just wanna remind all the commissioners about the public hearing on the sale of Pompton Lakes, what happened in Pompton Lakes tomorrow.
Yeah, that's at five o'clock. It should be a short meeting, but we do need a quorum. We need people to show up, so I will see you tomorrow in Pompton Lakes. Thanks, thanks, Matt. All right, goodbye, everybody. See you. We have to do a motion, but that would help, right? Otherwise, we'd have to stay here until.
Motion to close Duffy.
Second. Roll.
County Commissioners Bartlett.
Yes.
Best.
Yes.
Duffy.
Yes.
Gallo.
Yes.
Lepore.
Yes.
Deputy Director Lozare.
Yes.